Aye.
Director Tominski, aye. Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
And President Garlock.
Aye. We will now hear from the Cedar Rapids Community Foundation. This is the annual fall report to the Board of Education. Karen and Kristen, the floor is all yours.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm Kristen Partowski, the current Chair of the Cedar Rapids Community Schools Foundation. I'm joined by Karen Swanson, our Executive Director, and this is our mid-year update. This is my last update on the foundation. Lori Way, who is with Unity Point, will be taking over as Chair in January of 2025, which will be super exciting. So, our update, we published our annual report at the beginning of August in alignment with our fiscal calendar. It was sent out to you by email, and you can view it on our website at crcsf.com. I'd like to share just a couple highlights with you. We have reached the milestone of having over $2 million in assets under our stewardship, which is a really big deal. We've come a long way in just a few years. This is our 15th year of positive fund growth, and last year's investment return was 14.9%. We are thrilled. In the last fiscal year, we've granted over a half million dollars to district programs, staff development, and scholarships. We have seen a huge program growth in our fiscal agent and scholarship programs for seniors, due primarily to the excellent work of our Executive Director, Karen Swanson. More school organizations, scholarships, and PTAs have come on board this year to have their accounts professionally managed with the fiscal agent program. This lets schools focus on their mission and their fundraising instead of administration. So, the foundation creates opportunities for strong returns, professional donor stewardship, and increased liability coverage, and we expect that program will continue to grow throughout this year as well. So, we're starting the new fiscal year strong with a strategic plan that aligns with the district's plan. Our three focuses are career and technical education, professional excellence grants, and ensuring extracurricular fund, which was formerly known as SAFE. Teachers and staff can learn more about those programs and the funding available on our website, and our website is going through a huge refresh. It is in the final stages of being rolled out, and we hope to see that probably within the next month. In the meantime, I encourage teachers to visit the site, but note that student enrichment grants for classroom expenses, which are first come, first served, will open on Tuesday, September 3rd. So, be ready. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, if there are any. We really appreciate the support of the district in helping us fulfill our mission of providing financial support and supporting excellence in Cedar Rapids schools.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the Board?
I just want to say congrats on surpassing 2 million. That's amazing, and thank you for all the work and service you've provided here at the R C S D.
And I'd also like to say thank you for everything you do for our district.
It is our pleasure. Thank you.
Director Barson?
I also have a comment. I would just like to thank both Karen and Kristen so much for your work with the foundation. Having been a previous trustee, I see the amount of growth in visionary leadership that you're bringing, and I know it hasn't been easy, but it's absolutely been worth it. So, I just really want to sincerely thank you for your work.
Thank you. It's really appreciated.
I just want to point out, in my opinion, one of the most fun things that you do, and that's the Senior Walk. I think everyone involved in the Senior Walks gets such a kick out of it, so thank you especially for that.
Thank you. That is another program that Karen brought to us as something new, and it has been a huge hit. It is, even as a member of the public, you can go see your kids or your kids' elementary school, the Seniors Walk, and the excitement from the little kids to see what's possible is really extraordinary. It really is.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. And Karen, you did so good on your commercial.
Thank you. It wasn't a commercial. It was, it was an encouragement for our staff and teachers, and just making sure that you know that the Cedar Rapids Community Schools Foundation is your foundation. It's the first place you should always go if you need it.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is addressing the Board with addressing the Board communications delegations and petitions. Tonight, we have four requests for speaking. With four speakers this evening, we'll give you five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Tominski will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. If you've submitted a request to address the Board and choose to refrain from speaking in the interest of equality and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. To abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between Board Directors and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This Board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speakers that the Board cannot address personnel and student matters. The Board policy outlines a process for addressing and resolving concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to state their names and addresses when called to the podium. First, we have Phil Creachy, who is going to speak on the PEPL vote.
I'm Phil Creachy. I live at 1871 Ellis Boulevard Northwest. On September 10th, the School Board will hold an election to approve a tax levy, the physical plant and equipment levy of $1.34 per thousand of taxable value. That's actually $1.34 per thousand every year for 10 years. And the Board has said that that will not increase taxes, and that's true, but only partly so. Because, it's true because there was a 2014 levy that was approved, and that still is in effect, and unless that levy expires, the new levy to be approved in September will not increase taxes. But that's only part of the story, because if the levy is not approved, then the taxes will decrease by $1.34 per thousand until there's another levy approved. Now, if the School Board wants my yes vote in September, the Board has to embrace Harrison School. Harrison's an architecturally significant and historically significant school. Grant Wood and Marvin Cohn did the mural there. I haven't really heard a reason to destroy the school. It's in a place where a school needs to be, and it seems that everyone wants to keep the school, except the School Board. The Board should preserve Wilson School. Wilson has a niche on the West Side, and it's more structurally sound than newer schools like Taft and Harding, which are crumbling at our feet. I understand that the DeRachio after the DeRachio Kennedy was closed for a week, and Wilson was closed for a day to repair a window. So, if you destroy Wilson and Roosevelt, there won't be a middle school on the West Side, except Taft, which is nearly in Covington. And so, if the plan is to renovate Franklin and McKinley, which is what I understand is in, has been in the facilities' master plans for the last few years, if you can renovate those schools, you can renovate Wilson, and should. The Board should be honest with us and tell us where you want to build a new school. The only thing I've heard is that the Board has said, "Well, we haven't decided yet. We don't know where we want to build it." But a couple of years ago, the Board had a $312 million facilities' master plan, and a couple line items in that plan was the cost to construct a new middle school and the price for the land for it. So, the Board knew then where that land was going to be that it was going to buy for that new middle school. So, the Board knew then and should tell us now where you want to build that school, and the Board's dishonesty to this point should not be rewarded with a yes vote. These are my views and the ones I'll be talking to my family and my friends and strangers I meet on the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Thompson, speaking on child safety.
My name's John Thompson. I live at 2612 Brooklyn Drive Northeast. I'm here today as a concerned parent, not a candidate. What happened to my family today is an atrocity that should not happen to anyone in this school district. At 10:45 this morning, my five-year-old daughter went missing from Pierce Elementary. No one notified us for 30 minutes, and a random stranger picked my daughter up and brought her home. For a five-year-old, for teachers, staff, the people there, a five-year-old should not be able to go missing. What happened today was the teacher was yelling at some students for misbehaving. My daughter thought it was her. She went up to the second grade area to find my son because she wanted a hug. When he wasn't in the class, she thought he was picked up without her. So, she was scared and felt alone, walked back down the hall and out the front door, all the way down to 42nd before, thank God, a nice old lady picked her up, and she knew how to get to the house. I was at my office on the other side of town. Pretty sure I got a speeding ticket today for that. I rushed home. No parent should have the concern of a school not knowing where our child is. That is their job. Safety is a high priority, and I take my kid's safety very, very seriously. I have talked to a CRPD today, as well as my personal staff. I have a lot of concerns that a five-year-old can slip out of a door under radar and be able to walk that distance in the heat and no knowledge. And the part that makes me more upset is that she was able to make it to 42nd, get picked up by a random stranger, and dropped off, and then it took 10 minutes before the school called. My wife is enraged. And then the fact, I'm glad I can say this, the principal came over to talk to us, but when I asked about how we could fix this, not just for my child, but all children in this district, what can we change and implement to make sure our kids are safe, I got a partway apology with no real protocol. And as a combat veteran, I know protocol when it comes to safety. So, that is concerning to me, that a child of that age can do that. And trust me, I had a strong talk with her, but she believes in unicorns and rainbows, and everyone's her best friend. But it is highly concerning that that is allowed. I get no one saw her, but someone should be by the doors, or they should be locked. Children should not be able to leave a school unattended, definitely at that age. That is one of my biggest concerns. We need to keep our kids safe, and I'm for doing anything to keep my kids with the proper education and stuff, but I have to have safety for that. And so, I come to you guys because you guys write the protocols, and the safety protocols need to be changed if that is how things are able to happen. I've talked with SROs. I've looked at your guys' policy and protocols. That should have never took in place, and the fact that it took 30 minutes to notify us, I'll be honest, I'm a different type parent. I was raised old school and prior military. I don't care if my kid's missing in a bathroom, call me, I'll come look. In today's society, our kids, definitely a five-year-old, could not be walking a street alone. My fear and my wife's fear, my wife broke down crying. I almost cried, and I'm not a man to do that, but anything could have happened. She could have been kidnapped, she could have been thrown in a ditch, she could have been hit, and with the heat, you know, we had to let out school early. She could have gone missing from that, so I want that looked into. So, if you have any questions, I'll give you my contact, but I would look something done about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Tresnick, speaking about Harrison Madison.
Thank you. My name is Mary Treshnack. I reside at 2516 26th Street Drive Southeast here in Cedar Rapids. And this evening, I'm speaking on behalf of the Save Cedar Rapids Heritage Organization. Save Cedar Rapids Heritage is supportive of the action item before you tonight to renovate Harrison Elementary School, and we appreciate the Board listening to constituents who understand the cultural value of this structurally sound building for students, teachers, the neighborhood, and future generations. As we have previously noted, the unique English Tudor and Gothic design building is the most architecturally significant of the city's elementary schools and was built to last. Upgrading existing buildings can help avoid significant environmentally costly new emissions and keep tons of building materials out of our landfills, showing a true commitment to the environment and to our students' futures. Last year, the School Board approved a $30 million bond issue for Harrison, funding that should still be available. We are concerned, however, by the timeline included in tonight's presentation that shows the bidding for the Harrison project would come after the 2025 bond referendum, and question whether the Board would make the renovation of Harrison contingent on the outcome of next year's vote, rather than through the SAVE funding as previous elementary school construction has been funded. Tying the renovation of Harrison to the larger bond issue comes across as disingenuous and less than honest at a time when the Board is seeking the community's trust. If renovation of Harrison is in fact tied to the larger bond issue, it appears to hold the students of Harrison and Madison hostage in exchange for voter approval of the entire package. As your strategic plan calls for building trust and credibility and transparent and inclusive communication, we hope that the timing of the Harrison project is just coincidental to the timing of the bond referendum and not dependent upon it. Otherwise, it gives the appearance that the School Board is not providing equitable treatment to Harrison and Madison students, as has been afforded to students in more affluent neighborhoods. We truly hope to celebrate your decision this evening with no strings attached and support this monumental vote for our students, teachers, staff, and the entire community. And we thank you for your consideration of our children and their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, we have Beth DeBoome, speaking on the Harrison issue.
Hi, my name is Beth DeBoome. I hate public speaking, but I'm here because this issue is really important to me. I live at 2150 Cottage Lane, and some of you may know me. You might expect me to talk about preservation, and I will sort of. But another question in this issue of Harrison School is whether a renovated school will be equitable in the learning environment to the district's newly built schools. That is a valid and important question. So, for answers, I talked today to Kelly Webb. I'm not sure if you know who Kelly Webb is. She's the principal of Longfellow Elementary in Iowa City. Longfellow was built in 1917, three years before women were given the right to vote. It's the oldest school in the district and one of three historic neighborhood schools that the Iowa City School District has chosen to renovate instead of tear down. Kelly talked to me about the importance of having a neighborhood school and said a renovation can work for students, depending on the renovation. She talked about Longfellow's meticulous renovation, which took the building down to the studs, and how important elements were saved, the stage, the staircase, bricks, wood floors. Each piece of the original dark cherry trim was taken down, restored, and put back in place. The finished product is so close to the original that when the public walks in, they can't tell the difference between the older version and the new. "When you walk in, it's stately," Kelly said. "It's not institutional, all metal and glass." Longfellow reopened with great celebration. Kelly said saving the school wasn't just good for the surrounding neighborhood, it was good for the entire Iowa City community. Today, when I talked to Kelly, she had about 350 students enrolled, and they stayed a full day. No early out because they are fully air-conditioned. Kelly said, speaking on behalf of school officials, the entire district, that the district found value in renovating. We are just 30 miles down the road from Iowa City and can look there for answers. If done right, we can both preserve and enhance the learning environment of Harrison Elementary.
Thank you. That's all the speakers we have tonight. I will turn it over now to Dr. Grover for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I might be a little bit out of order here tonight, but I do want to acknowledge our parent, Mr. Thompson, who came up. Have Linda Reisack, she's the Chief of Schools for your area, for Area 3. She's going to come and talk to you. Thank you so much, and we totally agree that we care about our students' safety. Oh, you can't hear me? Oh, that's once in a lifetime. That we do care about our students' safety, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, and we definitely will look into the matter and make sure we address it properly. Thank you. So, on to the superintendent's report tonight. While we have officially started school on last Friday, August 23rd, I want to just take a moment in my report to highlight some of the things that it took to get us there. First of all, just want to say thank you to our nutrition team, who offered students free meals at various locations across the district. In total, over the summer, they served 65,000 meals and 4,300 snacks. Thank you so much for your hard work and dedication, even being called upon in the last hour to support over in the Johnson neighborhood, providing additional meals. We really appreciate our nutrition services team. Also, our operations department has been very busy as well. They completed some large projects across the district using our PEPL funds, including new parking lots at Jefferson High School, ADA upgrades to the locker rooms at Kingston Stadium, and new flooring in many buildings. The majority of these projects could not have been done without PEPL. You can see a full list of our PEPL-funded projects over the summer on our website. As we also think about besides the large PEPL projects, our operation crews, they worked this summer to get all of our school buildings and our facilities ready, and also helping us to open our new Trailside Elementary School. If you've not had an opportunity to hear the news report from that our students were featured, please take an opportunity. I guess they can tell the story better than anyone. What a great day of opening over at Trailside, and just to let you know that the students, they felt it immediately, the investment from our Board of Education and our community. A little bit on transportation update. Our transportation department, they held a bus rodeo so that bus and van drivers had an opportunity to review their safety procedures, as well as sharpen their driving skills before the start of the school. Our transportation department is also using an AI route optimization software to create their bus routes, and they are starting this year. We are transporting 4,500 students on 475 routes, and we kind of added that all up with our new software, that our transportation team is traveling around 7,000 miles a day to get our students to school and back home. So, thank you so much to the transportation team. And just a reminder to our parents that they can track their students if they are using our Stop Finder app. Okay, so, our all-staff kickoff, the day before school started on August 22nd, we also had the opportunity to bring all of our staff members together this year with a new format in three different locations, celebrating our high schools with our strong focus on our feeder patterns and making sure that we understand that, yes, we want to graduate our students to be future-ready. We know that it starts all the way when they start at early childhood, all the way through 12th grade, and so what a wonderful opportunity to celebrate our staff members with videos from our community. Thank you, our community, for letting us know that you have our back, spoken words from our students. We have from our choirs, show choir over at Grant Wood, and just many, many more highlights of the day. And thank you to our Board of Education members for stepping in, however we needed you, to ensure that it was a success. And for once, we had an opportunity to serve all of our staff members breakfast, and that means that was Child Nutrition Services, too, so once they had a chance to be served, and so that was great as well. So, speaking of our staff, our Human Resources Department has worked hard to fill most of all of our open teaching positions over the summer, and we are excited to welcome well over 130 new teachers to our district. We've also had to think of innovative solutions to ensure that we do have certified teachers at the start of the school year. That's always our goal, is how can we start day one, ensuring that we have certified, qualified teachers in front of our students in one way or the other. So, this year, the school district is partnering with Proximity Learning to help fill one teacher vacancy until we can hire a full-time, in-person teacher. With Proximity Learning, they provide synchronous instruction from certified teachers online while we have a person or staff member on-site to help facilitate the learning in the actual classroom. So, that's kind of new to us. It kind of expands our recruiting effort, where we can make sure that we have the knowledge and skills from a professional from anywhere, really, and while we have a caring adult inside the room to support our students. So, we'll see, we're kind of piloting that, we'll see how it goes, but just another innovative solution from our HR team. And I guess just here for me, maybe a little bit of point privilege here, but I also marked my 29th first day of school last Friday with the kids, and I had so much fun getting out, visiting our schools on the first day, from the crossing guard duties at Trailside, cafeteria duty over at Hoover, and I do want to say a special thank you to the ladies over at Hoover, because it was hot in there. It was. And they do this day in and day out for our kids, and so I'm just, and they were so grateful also, knowing that they have a new school on the horizon, and so just wonderful time. And then also, I stopped by several other schools, but I ended my day over at Van Buren. Their theme this year is the energy bus, and so they're driving with purpose over there, just a great time helping our kids to get home for the weekend. And so, as we think about tomorrow, we recognize today also that we were dealing with extreme temperatures, heat temperatures today, so I just wanted to take an opportunity also to thank our families for their flexibility. Anytime we have to call off school, that's a big deal. We realize that we're partnering with our families to support our students' education, and that does cause some inconvenience for many of our families, and so we try to do everything we can in order for our students to come to school. But we do have some challenges here. We talk about our facilities quite a bit, and that's part of our reality here in Cedar Rapids Community School District, where some schools can go all day, like we heard here from the public comments. Our students, their education was interrupted because we do not have the proper air conditioning in about 30% of our facilities. We also are a school district where we, ten school, we count hours, not days, and so if any of our schools are closed, we're not able to count those hours. So, what happens at one campus, it impacts all of our campuses, and so, but I do also want to say thank you to our leaders, our teachers, everyone being flexible. Again, I just talked about the transportation. 4,500 kids, they have to be transported on the buses with these extreme temperatures. Our team members, they did make sure that they had extra water and things like that for our students as we navigate these times. So, thank you to our families, as well as our staff members, for helping us navigate these times as we keep our students safe and ensure that they can continue learning when appropriate. Okay, all right, so as we kind of move here, this is my last item. Well, maybe one, two more. Two more. I'm a little long tonight. Bear with me. Vote on, we have the PEPL vote coming up on September 10th. I do want to just point out that this is a reminder to all of our families, you should have received a postcard just reminding you. It's also a good opportunity to make sure that you are registered to vote in all those It's also a good opportunity to make sure that you are registered to vote and all those things are in order. Also, just a point of just information is knowing that we are renewing the levy, and it will not increase your property tax. We will just continue what we've, the levy that we have, and even with the continuation, we continue to be almost $4 less than any of our surrounding school districts, and in many cases, we have tripled the amount of students. So I would like to note that I firmly have witnessed that our Board of Education, that they have been physically responsible and conservative over the years. We are maxing out the resources that we have available for us, and I just want to personally say thank you to our community. Many, many reasons, you can look on the website to see about the PEPAL dollars, how we've used it in the past, and how we have honored our PEPAL promise, and how we intend to use these dollars going forward. So thank you to the community for your support over the last 50 years of taking care of facilities here in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, and we look forward to being able to take care of them for the next 50 years to come. Thinking about taking care of people, excited about partnering with Hazel Health to bring mental health services to our students. We will be having a program on Wednesday, 8, that's 8/28, with a special event at Washington High School, where we will have our Iowa basketball player, Wash alum Hannah Stoki, will be joining us to help us, really help to address a very critical initiative as we talk about mental health within our organization. And final, final, Thursday, September 12th, if you want to help us celebrate Trailside, you can join us for their ribbon-cutting ceremony at 4:30 PM. It is open to the entire community, and because they have enlarged their footprint, we can accommodate all of you. So come out and help us celebrate the opening of Trailside Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. The beginning of school is always an exciting time, and your superintendent's report reflected that. Do we have any other board reports tonight?
I have one on behalf of myself, and that is that I also was able to attend a school. On the first day of school, I went to City View, and it was, I got to meet a student who had used this summer, who's a sophomore, who had used this summer to pursue his dream of becoming a meteorologist, which was really cool, and heard him talking about his dreams, and also learned about the advisor that will assist students at City View, making sure that opportunities to realize dreams are presented. So that was really cool. That was a great first day of school. And then, on behalf of the Policy and Compliance Oversight Committee, at its July meeting, the Policy and Compliance Oversight Committee listened to a presentation from Siobhan Snyder, Associate Executive Director of Iowa Association of School Boards. She provided information about best practices for school board policies, regulations, and procedures, and services available to CRCSD. The committee anticipates need for the board manual to be updated as a whole. In addition, the committee agreed on changes to Board Regulation 202.11 concerning public participation in board meetings and public hearings, and Board Policy 410 concerning co-curricular activities eligibility. These changes will be referred to Dr. Grover for her consideration and possible presentation to the full board.
Thank you. Any other board reports? Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Are there any items a director would like to pull for a comment, question, or separate Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Borchning?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, and then President Garlock?
Aye.
We have three items under administration tonight. The first is the approval of an engagement letter for Ayers &amp; Cooney PC involving the School Infrastructure Sales Services and Use Tax Revenue Bonds Council. Do we have a motion for the approval engagement letter, Ayers &amp; Cooney PC School Infrastructure Sales Service and Use Tax Revenue Bonds Council?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Borchning?
Aye.
I'll signify aye, and President Garlock?
Aye.
The second item is a presentation from the Safety Advisory Committee. They will present their revision to the recommendations based on feedback from the board.
Good evening, Board of Directors. My name is Janessa Carr, and I'm the Safe and Secure Learning Environment Administrator for Cedar Rapids School District. The purpose of today's presentation is to share recommendations of the Safety Advisory Council and include you guys in our plans for the strategic Safe and Secure Learning Environment Plan. Today, we're going to talk a little bit about success measures for Safe and Secure Learning Environment, which includes increasing a sense of belonging, reducing suspension rates, and reducing disproportionality in behavior infractions by race, IEP, and English language Today, you'll be hearing from myself, Riles Parker, and two of our Safety Advisory Council members, Angel and Ellen Day-Williams. In review of the members of the Safety Advisory Council for this past school year, it included 26 members. It was a blend of people from the Cedar Rapids community and our school district as well. We had Kids First Law Center represented, Tanager Place represented, Cedar Rapids Police Department will be added this upcoming school year, building principals, Foundation 2, Lynn County Public Health, Wellington Heights Neighborhood Association, and really just a good blend of people who truly care about children in our school district and safety. The Safety Advisory Council was facilitated by West Wind during the school year. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ellen and Angel.
Can we go to the next slide, please? All right, first, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Angel Ramirez. I serve as a youth peace project facilitator through Kids First Law Center, where I work as a community partner to McKinley Steam Academy, and for the last few years, I've also been working with Metro High School. My job every day is to bring restorative practices into school buildings while working with kids who are in conflict, either with each other or with staff. And every day, I'm working with kids to build empathy, problem-solving, communication, and conflict resolution skills. So it's safe to say I take restorative and equity-based practices very seriously, and personally, that is the lens that I've been able to bring to the very collaborative and talented team that is the Safety Advisory Council. So the Safety Advisory Council worked very hard this past spring and summer. We met twice a month as a team to review research, data, and information from interviews and focus groups that were conducted by West Wind in order to submit recommendations for action on both the part of district staff and for the school board. Do you mind going to the next slide?
Good evening. I'm Ellen Day-Williams. I am a retired administrator with the Cedar Rapids Community School District, and since my retirement, I was hired as a consultant with West Wind Education Policy. Thus, I am here, working on this project with you guys. So first of all, the district hired West Wind to facilitate the Safety Advisory Council and to provide reviews of research and prior community engagement information, and to conduct original interviews and focus groups. So as you can see, we interviewed and did focus groups with 168 people, and that's the breakdown of the people that we were able to work with. We interviewed them, and the Safety Council received feedback on early drafts before the board in July, on the July 22nd work session. And we also looked at comments on the draft recommendations from community members as we revised our recommendations when we met a couple of weeks ago.
So we created two documents to explain our recommendations. There's a summary document, which is a six-page document titled Recommendations to Achieve CRCSD Success Measures for Safe and Secure Learning Environments. And then there is a background document, which is a 56-page document that includes more in-depth information about the rationale for the recommendations, coming from a stakeholder input, reviews of research, and best practices in other districts. So again, both documents include the recommendations themselves, actions we recommend that the school board and the district take, a set of indicators of implementation and impact over a short, medium, and long-term timeline, and then suggestions for how you can measure the extent to which the district successfully implements the actions and achieved the desired impact. So in other words, we give you suggestions for the data that you could collect to determine implementation and impact. And then again, the six-page document just summarizes these details, while the background document really provides the meat of the details on each action, indicator, timeline, and measure. So here are the three recommendations that we are submitting. On July 22nd, we brought five draft recommendations to the board in a work session, and based on the feedback from that work session, we consolidated the recommendations into three priorities. So specifically, we incorporated coherence, multidirectional communication, and collaboration, which were previously separate recommendations into each of these three.
Okay, so our first, next slide, please. So our first recommendation is to adopt and use guiding principles to inform decision-making around safe and secure learning environments. And this is important because we originally brought you 11 guiding principles. We know that was a little bit much, but taking your feedback, we went back and we reduced it to the top four. So we're going to talk about those guiding principles now. As you can see on this slide, we share these as Cedar Rapids Schools CARE. So I'll tell you what that acronym is about. The C is for collaborate. That means we work together to address biases and listen to understand. And this is important because it's not a, it's not a bottom, I'm sorry, it's not a system where it's a top-down kind of thing. Everybody is in this together. It's collaborative, and it's to support everyone. The collaboration goes across all stakeholders, especially between students and staff. And we want to work to address anything that contributes to inequities, experienced inequitable experiences and outcomes, including bias and misunderstandings. So, I'm sorry, we have those in specific, there you go, C. Okay, now, thank you. A is for acknowledge. We want to be clear that while we are working toward fairness and responsiveness, that we're not promoting permissiveness. Instead, we're all about being responsible for our learning community and how it's created and maintained, and we must hold all of ourselves and everyone else accountable for our actions as well as our inactions. Next, please. This principle is restore, and I think Angel referred to this a little bit, but as we prioritize restorative practices, it's critical that we understand that we've set a high bar for responsibility and accountability to the learning community, and that learning community includes all of us. So restorative practices are vital to addressing root causes of disruptions to learning, and we know we have quite a few of those in our classrooms. So our goal is that through our actions, we build trust, and when there's harm, we have a process to repair the harm and restore the learning community. Engage. It's critical to everyone that we build quality relationships that support engagement in learning. This is more than just friendship. This is making connections related to one's roles in school, centered in learning and creating the supports needed to promote belonging. We believe these principles outline an approach to building and maintaining safe and secure learning environments, and while they may seem self-evident and simplistic, we believe that developing a common understanding across the district, as well as strategies of how to enact our commitment to everyone thriving, is not simple. You'll see that later, but it is not simple.
All right, recommendation two is to develop a restoration and discipline matrix along with guidance for how to reduce disproportionality and use professional judgment. This recommendation comes from the feedback that we have heard from constituents across the district, including in the interviews conducted by West Wind. We found that district staff shared a perception that there is a lack of consistency across the district around how schools interpret and therefore respond to student behaviors. Staff were hoping for more clarity about district expectations and more support in how they can reach those expectations. It was also evident that while there is a general agreement that restorative practices are worthwhile, there is not a common understanding of what those practices look like. So by developing a restoration and discipline matrix, the district would then be providing a reference tool with responses that are restorative, trauma-informed, and evidence-based. The Safety Advisory Council offered a couple example matrices that could be found in the longer background document on pages 37 through 46, so that you could see sort of what we were envisioning. After last month's meeting, we received feedback that the rollout that we had recommended was a little bit unclear, so we were in the process of adjusting that recommendation when we submitted our documentation. Our final recommendation is to pilot the matrix district-wide and work to gather feedback from everyone involved, students, family, and staff. Based on the feedback, the matrix should then be adjusted. We further suggest that the district invite at least one school from each level, elementary, middle, and high, from each of the three areas, to support a more intensive reflection and data collection effort that can then be used to inform how the matrix can be continuously updated. This is an example of the multidirectional communication and collaboration that we believe is so crucial. If we can refer back to the language of the recommendation, I want to note just the last clause, quote, "with guidance for how to reduce disproportionality and use professional judgment," end of quote. We recognize that while there is a desire for consistency and clarity in actual practices, you know, I could say this again, working in a school, the nuances of any given incident and the ways that biases and misunderstandings can get in the way usually mean that cookie-cutter decisions don't always work, right? So we know that there is a balance between discretion and direction. We hope that, for example, the matrix can provide guidance and clarity on, let's say, a specific requirement to action, such as where state law stipulates a required response to guns in school. And also, the matrix provides guidance and clarity on where there's room for a teacher or administrator to develop a creative response to a situation. Additionally, the Safety Advisory Council wants to note that as the district implements a matrix, it's important to help staff recognize patterns in student experiences and outcomes based on both qualitative and quantitative data, and to know how that then relates back to how we respond to the incidents. And then, one final comment, our recommendation two, the Safety Advisory Council really just wants to emphasize that our recommendation for the matrix is rooted in trauma-informed, evidence-based, restorative, and equitable practices that are centered on both systems and individual accountability.
Our third recommendation is to provide high-quality professional development to support teachers, administrators, and staff to create safe and secure learning environments. Again, this recommendation flows directly out of the interviews and the focus groups that we held, and a very common request was for more supports and opportunities for learning. You hear this all the time for teachers, "we would do, but we don't know, we don't have what we need." So we specifically found that the professional development should be provided around clearing up confusion about the Department of Justice consent agreement and what staff can or cannot do, the use of the guiding principles, the district's approach to classroom management, or UPBIS, the district's multi-tiered system of support for behavior and discipline, the district's restoration and discipline matrix, and the district's critical incident management In addition, the district should also ensure that all professional development providers understand these things and weave them into what they offer. We believe that it's important that we understand safety and security are first and foremost, crafted in the ways we interact in the classrooms and the schools our staff and their students deserve. Opportunities, they deserve opportunities to discuss the principles behind safe and secure principles behind safe and secure learning environments, and they deserve to understand the practical applications of strategies to create and maintain such learning spaces. They deserve as well to have time to practice these new strategies and receive feedback, and to be engaged in ways that build trust and mutual accountability. Thank you for taking the time to learn about our revised recommendations.
So, now that you've heard from some of our Safety Advisory Council members, we're going to transition into talking about the action items that support some of their recommendations. So, I'm going to hand it over to Riles.
Do you mind advancing? There you go, perfect. Hi, I'm Riles Parker. I'm the new Executive Director of Behavior Supports for the District. One of the primary roles of my position is to ensure compliance of our agreement with the Department of Justice. I've had the pleasure of joining this group since taking that position, and I've been able to go to a few of their meetings and then join them for this presentation as well. One of the things that became clear, especially on two of their guiding principles around collaboration and engagement, was that we needed to move beyond simply compliance with our agreement, and we needed to embed that into our practices as a district. We are doing a wonderful job of compliance around our agreement. However, compliance alone is not what we're striving for, right? We're striving to provide all the supports and all the tools necessary to make sure that we're making sure we get our kids where they need to be. So, there's been some realignment. I now work really close with Janessa and with Chris Gibson. I work out of the Student Services Department, and we have been working super closely on making sure that we get things out to our teachers and staff and our administrators, and this is one of those things that we're really looking forward towards getting out and working with everybody on this year. I'm going to talk specifically about the second recommendation, which is to pilot or restoration and discipline matrix. One of the things that became clear through working with the council just over the past month is that we have some misconceptions of what restorative practices are. So, that's one of the first things that we need to do. This is a matrix provided by the International Institute for Restorative Practices, and it talks a little bit about that. Sometimes people think that restorative practices are in lieu of discipline. Discipline is part of restorative practices. So, you can see here, we have control and support. So, to get students where we need them to be, we need to provide a lot of control and also a lot of support. We always want to be in that width window. So, we're going to work in that width window when we start talking about a matrix. It should include both. It's not just a discipline, and it's not just a support. Those two things need to work together to help support our students. I also think it's important to point out to people that if we think about some of the more intense disciplinary actions that happen in our district, those should be coupled with a very intense support action. So, the higher you move to the right and up in that width window, in the control, you also need to move higher or across in the support region, too. So, that's something that we've spent a lot of time talking about. We presented this timeline to our administrators earlier this month to kind of talk through the work we were starting to push forward with the recommendations that we knew were coming out from the Safety Council. So, the first recommendation we have is that the board adopts a revised policy around discipline. The reason that's really important is that we started working on and looking at other matrices that are out there, and also looking at guidance from the Department of Education. We want to make sure that as we put that together, we are working off of an updated policy that is compliant with Iowa code. So, that's one thing that we find that we want to make sure gets done, so that we can start pushing these things out. The next thing is to create the matrix and finalize that. I've been working super closely with Liz Jacoby, our Chief Compliance Officer, as well as Janessa and Chris and outside legal counsel to start working through some of those language things to make sure that we are tightening that up as much as possible before we get a draft out to anybody. But our goal is to get a draft out to our administrators to start getting some feedback right away in September. We want to move purposeful but quick on this to get people the support that they deserve. The next thing is from October to December, we want to engage in feedback cycles with our administrators, our engagement specialists, our teachers, the Safety Advisory Council, to get feedback on what we're missing, what we need to change, what we need to address. It's been a few years since I've been a building principal. Things happen in a building every day that there's not always a guide for. So, we want to hear back from them about those things so that we can get them into the matrix and we can start addressing those things. And the goal is that by the start of second semester, we're rolling this matrix out with full implementation, and it's been shared with our parents and all of our stakeholders. We want parents to understand the expectations in our buildings. We also want them to understand the guide rails around discipline and also what supports they can expect from their students if they're struggling, or for other students in the building. We want to make sure that we get very consistent across the district. Up at the top is just kind of the headers that we plan to have in the discipline matrix. So, the incident type, the definition, that is mostly guided by the Department of Ed and their definition, but we are trying to provide as many examples as possible because the Department of Ed language is not always clear if you're in the moment trying to figure out exactly what you need to do. We also have a range of disciplinary responses and a range of support responses. I think it's important to note that it will be a range. We're not prescribing a specific disciplinary action or a support action based on something that happens. We're providing a range. We want to make sure that our principals have discretion to make decisions based on what they know about a student in an incident, but we want to provide some guide rails for them to act within so that we can create consistency across the district. And then, the last box is going to be around communication, right? If an incident like this happens, who do I need to communicate with? Obviously, we always need to communicate with the parent, but do we need to have a conversation with the chief of schools? Do we need to have a conversation with me? Do we need to call Janessa? Do we need to do another type of investigation? We want to create that so it's very clear for administrators, so they can focus on doing their job of being administrators, and they don't have to be in this gray area. We want to eliminate that for them.
So, now, I am going to primarily focus on the third recommendation, which is to provide professional development and support. So, I'm going to spend some time just highlighting some of the action items that we have already been working on as a school district and kind of what we continue to, what we promise to continue to work on throughout these next few years. So, a dedicated monthly professional learning with administrators where we're able to bring in staff from our Student Services Department. That would include myself, Chris Gibson, Riles Parker, Tammy. And some of the strengths that we bring to that professional learning community would be having the matrix on hand, having someone who understands the DOJ compliance issues, myself bringing the restorative practices, family engagement and safety protocols as well. We also, when we're talking about safe and secure learning environments, it is not only restorative practices, right? So, think of restorative practices as the plate, but when we're talking about safe and secure learning environments, that includes many things, right? So, instructional empowerment is all about engaging students, and so that also contributes to a safe and secure learning environment. Making sure that all of our buildings understand the emergency standard protocol and providing that PD on what exactly are we using for when we do go into an emergency. Does everyone understand lockdown? Does everyone understand what a hold is? Does everyone understand what shelter in place is? So, providing training in that area as well, run Hyde Fight, making sure that all of our staff understand what to do in the event of an active shooter, making sure that all of our students have had the appropriate emergency lessons. That also contributes to a safe and secure learning environment. Making sure that our staff understand adverse childhood experiences. It's been, I really, really enjoyed just this past month, being able to get in front of all of our transportation staff, being able to train just less than a week ago, all of our PERS and all of our special ed interventionists, and talk about adverse childhood experiences, talk about bias training and how that can impact what we do on a day-to-day basis. De-escalation training, that also contributes to a safe and secure learning environment. Behavioral supports training with Riles, AKA DOJ, PBIS, crisis go, and making sure that all of our staff understand how to use that. And then, obviously, restorative practices for educators and making sure that we are investing in our staff, particularly teachers, instructional coaches, people who are really, will really help to build that bridge between, you know, central office and our goal of having a safe and secure learning environment for all of our students and staff. So, we just, we really want to highlight this because we already are doing great work, and we will continue to do great work as long as, you know, we have your support and continuing professional development and making sure that our staff are well-equipped and understand these practices. And before we end, we really want to talk a little bit about just why restorative practices are so important. Restorative practices can be used by any staff member. It includes both a range of informal interventions all the way to formal, right? So, when we're talking about weaving restorative practices into all that we do, a custodian can learn restorative practices and making sure that we're using like a common language. It's important that in trying to build a safe and secure learning environment, we understand restorative practices is the science of strengthening relationships and building connections. So, without that, we will not have safe and secure learning environments. It's important because all staff, all students, and all families can be taught about our mission of, you know, having restorative practices. We want to implement training the trainers, so like I said, making sure that our staff are trained and able to provide PD. And also, wanted to point out that the International Institute for Restorative Practices is the model that we will be using.
We are pleased to have worked in partnership with the district, with the district staff through the spring and also throughout the summer. As you can see, they've been diligent in their efforts and in using our deliberations and recommendations to plan out this coming school year. With them having presented just now what they are planning, we recommend to you, the school board members, that these are next steps you might want to consider making in response to our recommendations. We thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the entire committee. Clearly, you all have depth of knowledge and deep passion for this work, so we appreciate it. We also appreciate you taking the feedback that we provided last time and streamlining all of the work that you've done. So, thank you very much. Board, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I was just going to build on that. Two times a month over the summer months, you're continuing this work. We all know this matters so much and is time-sensitive, and so we want to put all the effort in while we can, and you guys are doing just that. Thank you for doing that. And listening, again, to the feedback, there was a lot of things we were doing during that work session, and it's really hard to condense all of those pages into a more bulleted approach, but I know that that helps us digest it a little bit easier. And then, just specifically, you know, this emphasis on belonging and connection, ensuring that every student feels like they are connected to community, that they have a strong sense of self. Those are things that we want them to feel during their time here and beyond, so thank you for emphasizing that. One question I did have, let's see here, all these notes, okay. So, when it comes to communicating the matrix with the school communities, will there be any sort of like, I guess I'm trying to picture, is that, I'm guessing during like a PD session, are there going to be external, like, community members that are part of this council involved in any of that in the schools, or will they be done with the task force and disperse? Is it kind of an ongoing approach?
I think our main thought is that it would be ongoing with the council. However, if the board has other recommendations for how to collect feedback from other groups, we would absolutely welcome that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead, Director Ratch.
To bring this, these recommendations, and it's definitely way more streamlined than when you first brought it, so thank you for that. Feel like I can wrap my brain around the simplicity of this presentation much better than the last one. The question that I did have, and I think Janessa answered it, was what model will you be using for the restorative practices?
The training that we'll be using is from the International Institute of Restorative Practices. It is also the same practice that I believe Kids First Law Center uses to train their staff.
Okay, that was what I was...
Yeah, so...
That is connected with Kids Law.
Yes, yep. And so, restorative practices for educators is the name of the training.
Got it. Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? The third item tonight is a presentation by Chad Schumacher, Director of Operations, who will provide us an update on the Harrison-Madison Construction Project.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me join you guys tonight. I want you to know I'm here with Robin Randall from Leggett Architects. We are going to give you an update on the Harrison project. So, as you guys know, I joined the district in October of last year, so not even a year into this yet, and that was right on the heels of the failed bond referendum. And we needed to understand why that bond referendum failed, so we started to have conversations and we started to look at different things that went on leading up to the vote for that bond. We had conversations with community members, and one key thing that we did was send a survey out to our many constituents. Go ahead. So, the survey went out, and it was, the deadline was April 22nd, and there was over 9,266 respondents to the survey. And one of the questions that we asked was, if you voted no, what were the primary reasons why you voted no? The number three reason for voting no on that survey was identified as closing Harrison Elementary School. So, we wanted to also get more information about why that came out as the number three reason. So, the next question we asked our many voters that responded was, what advice would you give regarding Harrison Elementary? 21% of the respondents said they would replace it with a new school on the same site. 35% of the respondents said they would renovate or expand Harrison, and 22% said they would support either option. It's important to understand that those that responded to our survey were also the same demographics as those that had voted in our last bond referendum. The demographics were that 60% of the people that we asked on the survey whether or not they voted no, 60% said they voted no that responded to the survey. That was the same amount of people that voted no on the bond. So, this was a good demographic or a good representation of those that voted in the last bond referendum. It's also important to understand that 22% of the people that responded to the question of what advice would you give to us regarding Harrison Elementary, 22% of them said that they would support either option. So, if you were to add that 22% to that 35%, you obviously come out with a 57% of the people would theoretically support a renovated option at Harrison. We presented a lot of that information to the board, and with reflection, the board asked us to go and come back with two different answers to two goals. One, provide an equitable, can a renovated Harrison provide an equitable educational experience for the students within that building? And the second question that they asked us to look into was, show us the cost comparison between Trailside and a new Harrison and the additions or renovations to a Harrison. So, the first question is about equitable educational experience, and I'll have Robin talk to you about that.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. So, the next slide, we wanted to show you, it's hard to read for, but we're happy to give you the details. The equitable education experience, what we want to identify is that there is a program, which is basically a list of spaces that are involved in every elementary school in your district. We start with an original program, and then we've identified all of the new schools, and then in the orange is the Harrison program. And what we want to identify to you, that there is a standard program that will be met by the renovations and additions, and so it will be equitable in terms of the number of spaces, in particular, the classroom size, also the collaboration spaces that have been developed by the new schools, and all of the gymnasium and other elements. So, equitable in terms of quantity of space and also equitable in terms of the quality of the space. The numbers are shown, we can, again, identify that. The key thing I wanted to say is we have compared in the past the Trailside program with the remodel and addition to the Harrison program, and the only difference in terms of square footage are the two preschool classrooms that are in the Trailside program versus the Harrison program. So, the 2,000 square feet that you've seen in the past comparing those programs are because of there are two additional classrooms in the Trailside program. We'll move on to the conceptual layout. We were asked to do a test fit just to make sure that an addition remodel would work on the site, and so we've done a test fit which shows remodeling the existing footprint, which is shown in the dark gray or in the vertical piece here. And then, the addition is showing a courtyard design currently, showing kindergarten addition, a gymnasium, a cafeteria... a gymnasium, a cafeteria, and then remodeling the media center as well as a new administration center. We're moving the entrance, the main entrance would be off the parking and the drop-off. The historical interest will, will be kept, it will be secured and be used potentially for events in the classroom. So that, that's the configuration currently. Again, it's a very conceptual sketch at this point, but we're proving that the program that we talked about, the equitable program, can be accommodated in the existing school and the addition. As long, as well as the additional parking, et cetera, for the site amenities. And then we also wanted to just identify that the average classroom size in all of the programs is 850 square feet, and that includes all of the new schools. And it just so happens that the existing classrooms at Harrison are 850 square feet. So you can see that the configuration is a little bit more linear. That's a historic building, is typically designed that way so that natural light can get to every classroom or every desk. But you can see that all of the movable, flexible furniture that's been specified for the new schools can be accommodated in the historic building. So refresh on all the finishes. When you walk into the newly remodeled Harrison building, it will feel like a new classroom. I think that's it?
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we purposely made that matrix or that Excel very detailed and you couldn't read it because we wanted to show how we did take a look at all the programming within all the schools, West Willow, Maple Grove, Trailside, and also compare that to what we're suggesting for Harrison. So again, you have that handout in your packet that you could read a little bit easier. So the, the other question that you guys asked us to look at was the cost for construction of a, an addition and renovation at Harrison. So again, these are hypothetical or, help me with...
Conceptual.
Conceptual drawings, and there are also an estimate of the cost, but we did use a, an estimator to come up with a, a cost of what it would cost to do a renovation. And if you look at the total cost for a new building at Harrison, we were about $34.1 million. In addition to renovation at Harrison, we're estimating to be about $35.6 million. So that's about a difference of $1.4 million plus. So as we look at that, we feel that it would be very possible for us to be able to take a look at affording renovation at Harrison. And then the next slide is just kind of a, we wanted to touch base on our long-term build plan and to really understand how this plays into the long-term future-ready facilities task force work that we're currently working on. In 2018, the district did identify that our neediest schools, and today's events with the heat obviously shows that for us, that our neediest schools are our elementary schools. And so they identified the fact that we would like to renovate or replace our elementaries first before we addressed other items. They also stated in that work in 2018 that we would have to go out for a bond if we wanted to try to accomplish all of our goals throughout the future of our facilities. So this outlines the fact that we would have a, a plan for addressing all of our elementaries, but through the task force work, we would identify other projects within the district that would needed to be addressed, and after the bond vote, we would be able to start to address all those other projects. This does not state how those projects would be funded at this time, just the fact that we would identify those projects and then move forward with a plan of how to address those needs. The last slide is just the design and construction project schedule for Harrison if it were to go back to a renovation option. It would take about a year for a redesign for renovated space at, at Harrison, and that would coincide with bidding at about the time of the, of the bond referendum in November of '25. And then construction could start after that and move forward. Again, we want to reiterate and, and stress that we are looking at the option of renovation and whether or not that is a viable option. If that is the case, then we would go back and look at developing a plan for renovation and come up with a drawings, and then decide after the task force has completed all of its work, how all the projects in our future-ready facilities plan would be funded with the different buckets of money. So that's our information for you guys. I'm sure you guys have some questions. If you want to go ahead and we can answer those for you.
Thank you, Robin and Chad. I just, I just want to make a comment first, and then we'll open it up to other questions and comments. I think it becomes apparent to me as we sit and listen to your presentation that we are in a situation where we have a lot of needs right now. At our last meeting, we identified Hoover and Van Buren as being very high need. We have a need at Harrison, we recognize that, but I think it's also appropriate to remind the community that there has been a very long span of time when we did not do any bond issues, we did not do new construction, and we find ourselves, I believe, right now in a situation where we have a lot of needs that are very crucial. So it falls on us to help figure out how we prioritize those tasks. The facilities task force will, will work on that alongside us, but I do think we have a lot of needs, we're seeing where history has left us here right now. So I would open it up to questions, comments from the rest of the board.
So I, I know that, again, just thank you for all the work that you're doing on this. So the save money, I know we bonded against save to be able to do these elementary school projects, and as Cindy reiterated, major needs at Hoover and Van Buren that were affecting, busting at the seams and affecting, you know, the teachers' wellbeing and the students' wellbeing. So really glad we were able to address that. So the task force, you know, is looking at the needs of the district and kind of helping us shape the timeline and priorities, but when it comes to the timeline, can you just reiterate again sort of the buckets of money and how this plays into the decision-making and the timeline that was in question earlier tonight?
Sure. So as a lot of you have seen, and maybe even seen the video that I have about the buckets of money, we'll look at it, YouTube sensation, but there are, there are several different pots of money that we use to address our facilities, one being the PEPAL, physical plan and equipment levy, one being the SAVE, which is that one cent option sales tax that we've talked about, and then if we were able to pass a bond referendum, that would allow us to have some funding there as well. In 2018, the district did make a commitment to using the save money to address the needs at the elementaries. In that plan, they also built in pauses to be able to address needs as they were, as they came forward. We identified the needs at Hoover and Van Buren because of the increase in enrollment at those buildings and the continual increase in enrollment that will happen because of development within the city in those areas. We worked diligently with the city as well as our demographer to make sure that the, that the data that we had supported that increase in enrollment in those areas, but we had to address those, those buildings because that was a pinch point for us. Moving forward, we know that Harrison and Madison are two of our buildings that are currently have window air conditioning and doesn't, do not provide the facilities that are equitable or conditioned for our kids to be able to go to school on days like this. So we know with those are buildings that we have to address as well. And so to answer, I'm kind of going around to get to your, to the answer, but the reason I bring all that up is to say that we have a responsibility now to engage with the task force work to identify all the projects that would need to happen within the district and identify all of our needs as we move forward, and then prioritize those needs and what has to happen next, and then after that, and going down the line throughout the next 15 to 20 years. And so as we identify the projects that we have to address and then identify the priorities that, and the way we address those, then we can start to decide what buckets of money that we can use to be able to pay for those projects. We're going to have to make a decision of what language is on the bond so that we can put that to our voters in November, and we have to be very specific in what we're asking to vote for, and that's the work that the task force is doing right now in, in the background.
Thank you so much.
Did that answer your question?
Yep, yep.
So Chad, how often is the, I know we have a new established facilities master plan task force, our committee, and is there a time, have you guys been thinking of the timeline putting in place? Because I think it's important to keep the community informed about how we're moving forward with the work that is being done.
Sure.
And that, and I, and I think that's really important, that the community is aware. But I do want to thank you guys for listening to the board too, saying, take a step back and, and listening to our community of what they would like to see happen, and we focused on that bond. Why didn't it pass? So I know you have a new committee, I think you have, what, 80 to 100 people on the committee? So I think what will be important for us is that we get feedback so we know where we're at and how we need to move forward.
Yeah, that's a very good point. I appreciate you bringing that up. We're in the midst of working with that task force now, and the timeline is that we will meet monthly through next spring, and then by then, we will be able to take some options back to our voters, and our plan is to go back with options and ask them, which of these options would you support from a financial standpoint and a project standpoint? And so we can get feedback again, and then come back to the task force, develop that plan completely, and then bring that to the board to say, this is what the community is supporting, this is what we recommend to you to put onto the bond. So a timeline would be by next April or May, and then we would have that language ready to start advertising that as a bond vote. So that's kind of the timeline for that.
Thank you.
Eighty-plus people.
Okay. In the past, I think the task force continues to seem to dwindle, I think, so I would, I think this board would like to just hear that participation continues to be high, that that number, you know, if it dips below 80, if you're seeing kind of low participation, I think this board would benefit, I think the community would benefit from hearing from that.
Yeah, and we would love for, to add to that 80-plus too, and we have some other invitations out for that as well so that we can continue with that participation.
How many would be too many?
A hundred would be getting up there. No, but we, we were very strategic as well in who we chose for that task force because we wanted a representation from all quadrants, all the businesses, faith groups, parents, different people are on that task force. Neighborhood association, representation, those types of folks are there representing us.
Yeah, I appreciate you coming back with something that is equitable in space, right? I know that was one of the concerns that we saw, the other one being the cost. So obviously, the cost is still higher for this. We've looked at the survey data, so it's pretty clear what the community is looking for seems to be the renovation at Harrison, but what it seems to be missing is the cost. So are there things that the task force and administration can continue to do to look at, at that cost coming down? I heard you say earlier that the numbers were conceptual, so I'm kind of curious of some of the things that might contribute to not sacrificing for students in space but still being fiscally responsible, as this board has signaled that it cares about.
So I will speak to that a little bit. I, I kind of let Leggett know that they need to build to cost, they're going to need to work with us to make sure that we can provide an equitable educational experience, but also staying within budget, with, within that budget range. So we're going to have to work really hard to do that, but with, what we looked at here is we feel comfortable with being able to provide the programming that all the schools have and the experience within that programming with that cost that we kind of came up with. There may be things that we have to decide between a wood-framed window, an historical wood-framed window versus an aluminum window. That, that might be some things that would be examples of things we might have to consider, but overall, the experience that the children have within those spaces would be the same as if they were at Trailside or West Willow or Maple Grove.
I would just say, y'all good?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much for all the detailed work that you are doing with this. This is going to be a process, right? It's going to take more digging in and really figuring out how this really needs to go. I think the board has really, we've been in this for a long time, a long time, and I think it's really commendable that we have heard the community's voice about how they feel about it, and that's why we're here having this conversation. We heard the community, and we paused for a moment to stop and consider what it is that the community is desiring. The, the price points that you put up there are, whoa. So it's going to take some time and process to get those narrowed down and get some hard numbers that we can really have information on and wrap our brains around. But I think that up until this point, I, I'm proud of my fellow board members and the work that they have put into this and the stick-to-it-iveness concerning Harrison and hearing the community's voice about that. So thank you. And the task force, you said 100 would be your top number? Okay, so there's just 20 spots.
If you notice someone, let us know.
That's it, okay. Okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Yep.
I did want to, other comments?
Yes, very, very quickly, there's been mention of the task force, so of course, that's an opportunity for me to say thank you to our community. We ask our community to serve on a number of different committees and opportunities to engage with us, and so it was wonderful to see so many people at our initial meeting. I do also appreciate the charge from Vice President Tyminski in regards to making sure that we can maintain, sustain that momentum that we have. And with that being said, I think a couple of things to note, a couple of promises or commitments from us as an organization, things that are a little bit different as we move forward. Number one, we want to make sure that we are creating space within our task force to help people see and feel that their voices are important and that they have equal voice within those discussions. I think we set the stage for that at the initial meeting. Also, we have board engagement out the gate this time around, so thank you to our board members for serving on our finance and facilities commitment, as well as we have board members as part of our task force. And, and then the third commitment is that before we will have the board to vote or consider any language to go on the, for, out for bond, that we will take it out to our greater community. That's important. We had almost 10,000 people to participate in the initial survey, and we said that we would bring a plan back to them. They actually gave us that encouragement to come back, which shows us that our community is engaged in this conversation and with us as we move forward with our facilities. So I just want to take the opportunity, number one, to thank our team, Chad coming in at the time that he did, and just really giving us that opportunity to go out and get some quantitative as well as some qualitative data. As the superintendent, I feel like now that I've been here a little over a year, I've had the opportunity to have my own conversations out in the community and understand some of what the community is seeking. So as we take a look at the numbers tonight, as we consider the square footage, and thank you to Leggett, Robin for giving us more detail so that we can really see how we have those equitable learning spaces as well as the cost, that as an organization, yes, we are data-informed, but we're also values-driven, and I think that's what's in front of us as we think about Harrison would be the values of our community and what we value. And so I just thank the Board of Education for directing us to pause, to reconsider, and bring you back the information. I do appreciate your leadership, giving us the opportunity to be reflective, and I think that's also representative of the Harrison School. They are a leader in me school where they spend time studying what it means to be a leader. And to be a leader, sometimes that calls for vulnerability, it definitely calls sometimes for reconsideration, and I firmly believe that reflective leaders are effective leaders, and I thank the community for giving us the opportunity to be reflective in this moment to really think about our values and how we provide a high-quality education for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. Other comments? Thank you for the presentation, Chad and Robin, appreciate it. We have an action item tonight. The recommendation from the Cedar Rapids Community School District Administration is to be considered. Do we have a motion to approve the CRCSD Administration's proposal to renovate Harrison Elementary? The proposal should adhere to the standards and expectations of constructing West Willow, Maple Grove, and Trailside Elementary Schools and/or future build plans.
I move to approve the recommendation from the administration.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Boortning?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Aye.
All signify with aye, and President Garlock?
Aye. Thank you. We have four items under board governance tonight. These are the second readings of two board policies, one on student discipline and one on student attendance. Both policies have been revised to align with new state laws. We have the second read to revise Cedar Rapids Community School District Policy 0604A. Do we have a motion to approve the second read of Policy 0604A?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Bochning?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
All signify with aye, and President Garlock?
Aye. Due to the last motion and approval, do we have a motion to approve the resolution to rescind Board Regulation 604.1-R-1, and adopt in lieu thereof Board Policy 604A?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote.
Director Bochning?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
All signify with aye, and President Garlock?
Aye. Do we have a motion to approve the second reading of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Policy 602, Compulsory Attendance Policy 602A, Chronic Absenteeism and Truancy, and Regulation 602A.1-R1, Chronic Absenteeism and Truancy?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Bochning?
Aye.
All signify with aye, and President Garlock?
Aye. Due to the last motion and approval, do we have a motion to rescind Board manual provisions for student attendance, chronic absenteeism, and truancy, adopt provisions in lieu thereof, and renumber accordingly?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Bochning?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
All signify with aye, and President Garlock?
Aye. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting with no further business?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We stand adjourned at 7:06 PM. Thank you.